All right, good evening, everyone. It's the time and place for the January 2024 regular meeting of the Royal Oak Planning Commission. Welcome. I will call the meeting to order, and I'll ask down to my right if everybody will put their appearances on the record.
Clyde Esprit.
Charlene Douglas, City Commissioner.
Tim Twing, Director of Community Development.
Nick Kerdowski, City Attorney.
What do you got, Tina?
Kim Ellison.
And I'm Gary Casado, the chairperson. All right. The first order of business is the approval of the meeting minutes from November 4th? No, December 12th, December, December meeting minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
There's already a movement there. Is there a second?
Elsa.
Okay, it's been seconded. Any discussion of the approval? Motion, that is. Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Please say aye or nay. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? None. Okay, great. Motion passes. Minutes are approved. I will sign those and get them over to Mr. Twing. Does anybody have anything? Before we move on, does anybody have anything to add to the agenda tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to public comment on non-agenda items. If any member of the public would like to speak to the Planning Commission on a agenda, a non-agenda item, please identify yourself, come forward, and you'll have three minutes. And seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment, and we will turn to new business, which is a public hearing. Oh, sorry, this one. Public hearing on special land use and site plan, SP 2401-01, at 2005 Belair Avenue. Mr. Twing, please introduce this project to us.
Certainly. The property that's in front of you actually includes two parcels. It includes, two existing parcels. It includes 2005 Belair, and it also includes a portion of the city's DPS yard, the animal shelter portion, and the driveway that leads out to Edgeworth, which is addressed as 1515 North Edgeworth. So both of those properties are part of the submission in front of you. They are both zoned general industrial. It is the petitioner's request that the property be split with and developed for a new animal shelter in the front portion of an existing industrial building, with the back portion being maintained for warehousing, at least in the existing building. The surface lot to the north of that is planned for about 25 parking spaces, which will include parking for the warehouse and a certain number for the animal shelter that's out to the front, as well as some outside storage of vehicles, whether fleet vehicles or other vehicles that might be for sale. In the industrial district, the kennels or daycare facilities for animals with overnight stays, as long as it's within a permanently enclosed building and there's no exterior runways or walkways, is considered a permitted use. The automobile portion of the back part is considered a special land use, and that's really why the special land use request is in front of you this evening. You also have a site plan document and repair. There's a couple options in terms of how the property gets to split, which may change in the future. If it's a true land division where each parcel becomes its own designated property, the DPS yard in the north half of 2005 Belair will need to be combined in order to comply with certain zoning provisions. And the front half would have access out to Belair and frontage on Belair. On the other hand, the petitioner has indicated they may pursue, at some point in the future, a condominium project. So either one of those, at this point, is an option that is still open. The biggest factor that I will throw out right now is if they're split into two individual tax ID properties. Again, as I said, they'd have to be combined in the back for frontage. And then also, the building where the property line is proposed that runs almost through the middle of the building would have to be built in such a way that it's two separate distinct buildings, rather than simply a firewall. Terms of parking on the site, the staff report identifies basically about 4,700 square feet of usable area for the animal shelter, and therefore they would need 12 spaces based on criteria and the ordinance for those. Right now, you'll see that there are five parking spots depicted in the front yard setback of the property out onto Belair. The ones on the east portion have access from a driveway along the east side of the property that's involved. The ones on the west side, the only access would be from an adjacent parcel. So one of the criteria that, or one of the conditions, is that an access agreement be included to ensure that those are available in the future. In terms of the warehouse, there's approximately 5,200 square feet of usable space, and that would require six parking spots for the warehouse in the back. There are 30 overall spots depicted on the site, so there are adequate numbers to meet the parking requirements for both operations. Some of those parking for the animal shelter are depicted in the north half in the back Well, we did not count, and one of the items that, in terms of parking, was that the existing animal shelter that's on the DPS yard, at some point when the new one is finished and operational and moved over, that building would be demolished. If it's maintained, then there would be a parking number generated for it. But right now, my understanding is it will be demolished. Terms of ingress egress, there is a driveway along the east side of the building at 2005 Belair. There is also a driveway easement agreement with the property to the east, 2009. A copy of that easement agreement is in your packet, was included. So effectively, there's about 34 feet of driveway space there for ingress egress from Belair. As I indicated, the other access point on the plan would be an existing drive out to North Edgeworth that's also depicted. Terms of landscaping and screening, there is no screening proposed along Belair between the parking spaces and the right-of-way. The Planning Commission does have the ability to waive that standard as part of your site plan review. With that, I think I've touched on most of the site plan issues and special land use report. If there's some questions, I'd be happy to try and address them.
I don't know whether to hand up first. We'll go with Clyde.
Mr. Twing, you alluded to that this is going to be two separate distinct buildings, and this is certainly something that's a bit unique to us, to have a shared uses of this sort. And you also alluded to that you wanted something that rose above and beyond just a firewall, separating the buildings to create that distinction. What would that entail?
Well, again, that depends on the ultimate decision going forward. If it's divided as two distinct tax ID property numbers and treated separately, basically they'd have to build two exterior walls. One for each, each portion of the building. You couldn't share a wall. It would have to be able to stand on its own, is my understanding under the Building Code. On the other hand, if they chose to pursue it as a condominium and address common areas and some other things, it might not necessarily need to be built in that fashion. So I don't, I don't believe that decision's been totally made, and the two parties involved would have to make that decision. It's really a Building Code issue? It's not a zoning issue?
It's not something we see at too many meetings, so I just wanted to get some clarification. Appreciate that.
But we just wanted to make sure everyone was aware that that was there.
All right, Chief, your hand up.
Mr. Twing, you said something about combining it with the public works yard.
Right. Right now, if you look at the parcel map, let me see if there's a good one. Probably this survey.
All right, I've got that one.
If you follow the line, the cursor, if you can see it up on the board. 2005 Belair ends basically at this, this point.
I can't see that.
Right here.
Okay, right.
Okay, the city DPS yard is this portion that goes out, it's kind of an L shape, goes out to Edgeworth. That is a piece that would be split off from the DPS yard, and if the land division occurred, the new parcel line would be through the middle of the building. These two pieces would have to be put together in order to have access to a right-of-way, because you wouldn't have it out any other way.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Ellison.
Mr. Twing, you mentioned that the parking targets are being met. So we have, on this site, we have 12 spaces for the animal shelter. Except whatever. We have the five in front, and that means we're going to have seven in the back. Now, are those going to be designated as animal shelter spaces, or just going to be part of the mix of all the parking in the back?
I believe there's a notation on the plan that identifies those. There's a designation for the warehouse parking along the west property line, and I believe there are seven in the middle that would be the animal shelter portion. And frankly, that can adjust based on operational needs and issues, layout.
Yeah, I'm just concerned, because it's a long walk for the employees on a cold day when they've got to park way in the back and closes doors halfway up the road on the, on the east side. Is there any possibility of fitting some spaces in the 34-foot driveway, parallel to the building?
Well, there's currently, I believe, some door openings and some encroachments into part of that. I wouldn't say it's impossible, but it would take some revisions. I don't know whether the intent would be to run them the entire length or only the front portion.
My thought would only be next to the animal shelter portion of the building.
And if it's only, I'm not sure you'd get more than two.
Okay, okay. We can discuss that when we get into details, I'm just curious. But there, I just want to make sure we have 12 designated spaces for the shelter.
Okay. Mr. Ellison.
Just want to make sure I'm understanding the lot combination thing correctly. So should they be required to combine the two parcels? Would the resulting parcel essentially be its own separate parcel, separate from the current dealership and separate from the animal shelter? Or is it, when combining those two, the resulting parcel would actually be added to what's currently the dealership parcel?
Well, I think that would be a decision of the property owner at the time, whether they wanted to combine it with the existing dealership. Minimally, the two parcels that are involved in this site would have to be combined to make sure that there's a public frontage.
Got it.
If they chose to combine it with the dealership, that, that's fine. It's just not a requirement.
But at minimum, right now, it would essentially be a third parcel in between the two. Got it. Thank you.
All right, I have a quick question here. So if, just following up on Mr. Ellison's question, if they were to separate the two parcels, the animal shelter from the warehouse, would then not the seven parking spaces to the north then be on somebody else's property?
Yes, they would. My understanding, there will be an agreement drafted between the parties, and as you have an easement agreement on the property to the east, you would have an agreement that identifies those seven spots on the, on the other parcel.
Okay, but since we don't know they're going to do that yet, that's not one of the contingencies you've...
Well, it's depicted on the plans, is my understanding, so we don't need to, we don't make things contingencies that are identified on a plan.
All right, one, go ahead. Mr. Ellison.
You done with questions?
Well, I, yeah, I do, I have, I had one more quick question, but you go ahead, because I lost my train of thought.
Can I just say, I meant to do this before we got the discussion, getting going in discussion, but I want to point out that my wife is the general manager of the animal shelter. And I checked with our attorney if he thought there was any kind of conflict of interest, and his opinion is that he's buying, is that there really is, there's no financial or, how do you put it?
Cunieri.
Cunieri advantage. So I'm going to be participating in this, voting in it, but I just want to highlight anybody's questions that there was a conflict. I've checked that there is no conflict.
All right, appreciate that. Thank you. Any comments by any of the commissioners, based on Mr. Ellison's statement? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on. I know what I was going to say. So just for the record, I want to be clear, the only issue about a special land use is not for the shelter, it's because the use of the warehouse, the anticipated use of the warehouse is what they need a special land use for.
Well, it's the, it's the anticipated use of the warehouse and the, and the parking lot to the north that they're going to store vehicles, whether they're fleet vehicles or vehicles for sale. And the dealership operation is the special land use. The animal shelter would only be a special land use if they had an outside dog run. All of the activities at the animal shelter are planned to be inside, so it's simply a permitted use.
All right. All right, any other questions for Mr. Twing before we call up the petitioners? All right, seeing none, I will ask the petitioners to come forward, introduce yourself, and tell us why you're entitled to the relief you're seeking. Bring your team up, please.
Who's first?
I'm just going to go over to your Clad Architects, and then we have Len, my community of Champion Hargraves, Jody Ellison, the shelter, the shelter manager, and Jeff Clad of Krieger Clad Architects as well.
All right, proceed.
So first, we want to thank Mr. Twing for the, the great presentation already provided here today. The location is just south of the current animal shelter, between Campbell and Stevenson, next to the Kroger, and...
I want to make sure that's on, because there...
It says it is.
It's not here, yeah.
Okay. So for the overall site plan, as alluded to earlier, the purple on this plan is indicating the area that could potentially become part of the combined lot to the north, and then the orange would be the, the animal shelter portion to the south. The property is currently accessed by that access road indicated by the number six to the east, which, as was mentioned, is 34 feet wide, 17 feet of which is part of this parcel. The parking has already been addressed, for the most part, but I just wanted to add a note that the screening, if required, would eliminate the bottom two parking spaces in the front of the building. So that would go down to three spaces, if that cross-access agreement was granted. And then here, we are showing, at the new entrance, an ADA ramp to access the barrier-free parking. That is required by code for that entrance, and then some plantings in the middle, and those three potential spaces as well. This is a photo of the existing building, and we are proposing minor modifications. So we're proposing one new window on the west side of the property, and then transom windows above with a full replacement of the storefront, as well as painted graphics. There's been some discussion of that being Romeo and Cece instead of the cat and the dog that you're seeing there. And then the east wall, which is not depicted, will have three openings that will have infilled screen systems and overhead shutters to allow for the indoor-outdoor dog run on that side of the building, which are shown on the overall plan. So when you enter through the existing door position, you'll enter into the lobby, and on the right side, you'll have all of the cat items. So you'll have the colony, the 38 cat kennels in quarantine, and then on the left side, you'll have the dog runs. So you'll have 22 total dog runs, or dog kennels, as well as some shared conference space in that play yard for them. And then that door that we're adding on the south will be used by the staff and for animal control to enter after hours to put animals in the quarantine rooms. And then these are just some photos of the lobby, and then blowups of those plans if you have any further questions.
All right. Do you have anything to say about the warehouse?
The warehouse portion will be used by the Champion team. They currently store, they're planning to store out-of-season vehicles, so like sports cars that have been winterized will be stored in there. And then if you have any further questions about the use of that storage space, then Len can answer those as well.
All right, are there questions for the petitioner? Mr. Ellison.
If we go with the situation where we've got to put the double wall, is that wall going to be built, I'm assuming out of CMU?
Yes.
But is there going to be a layer of insulation between those two?
So the plan currently, if the two firewalls are built, is that they will be an inch and a half apart, so they won't need any insulation between them, and those planes will break the roof and then be capped, so you won't get any water coming through.
So as it's designed right now, there's no insulation, it's just air void?
Correct.
Is there any advantage to putting insulation in there, because we're going to have two competing noise generating facilities? You're going to have the animal shelter, which is going to have a lot of parking dogs, and you're going to have the storage area, which is going to have equipment running in and out. I'm just concerned about noise filtration through that wall.
We do not have any concerns of the noise transfer between the two uses.
Okay. Now, maybe something you can look at. I have some concerns. Okay, thank you.
All right, other questions? I have a question, then. Just looking at the difference between the rendering and the drawing, I may be confused, but the five spots on Belair, on your rendering, they're going north and south. On the, on the plan, they're going east and west, and it looks like there's going to be some landscaping separating them. Am I...
Yeah, the cover page rendering was not fully updated with this latest site plan information. The right-of-way was updated by the city, and so those spaces that are existing there now that go perpendicular to the building are non-compliant. And so the plan that's in front of you today is showing compliant parking spaces being parallel to the front of the building.
Okay, and is there going to be a tree there?
The intention as of these plans is to have some sort of tree.
In the middle?
In the middle.
I see. So in this case, the cars would come in, I guess they could point either way, but, okay, you've answered the question there.
Yeah, so there would be walkways, and then a planting bed in between the walkway in front of the trees.
All right. Other questions? Mr. Ellison.
Come on, you see, there will be a tree between the two parking spaces there in the front?
Between the two sides of the tree. There will be a planting bed of some sort.
Okay.
That is in compliance with the landscape requirements.
Okay, I just wonder if a better idea to put a fire block in there, but for other reasons. You're right, that was a joke.
Oh, I get it.
I get the joke. Okay, any other questions for the petitioner? All right, hearing, hearing none. I'm going to bring this back to our side of the table. You can have a seat. We may call somebody else back up, but, oh, public hearing. Okay, is there anybody here from the public who would like to speak to the Planning Commission about this project? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the side of the table. Do we have a discussion, more questions, motion on this project?
Are you going to talk?
I'd like to, I think Mr. Nadolski wants to speak, so...
Well, come on up. Introduce yourself for the record and...
Len Nadolski from Champion Hargraves Chevrolet. Little bit about the warehouse. We put, we store records in there, old furniture in there, and the lot would be an overflow lot. We do a lot of fleet vehicles that come in and go out right-of-way, so it's more of an overflow. We're also involved in electric vehicle charging program. We do all the Domino's vehicles, all the Mallow Electric Full Size Silverados, and part of that takes time to charge them. So we store them in that lot, prep them and charge them for a lot of fleet companies. So sometimes there's no vehicles at all, other times it fills up and then it's gone. So it's in and out, is what that would be used for. So it's more of an overflow of the current facility. So that was the usage that came up with it. If at all possible, you, Jim brought up about the parking, if you could do parallel on the side, would be good, helpful. I will tell you, the building next to it, they put vehicles on an angle, and they park three to four in that 34-foot area. I kind of measured it and did it. That would be able to have the employees parked up front, but if you can't, we can accommodate them. And we'd actually put some signs up, because we don't want other people parking in, the employee parking for the animal shelter.
Put an angle parking and make them back in.
Correct. Or go parallel. So, so that is an opportunity. If you'd look at that, that would help. And they are doing that already next door.
Okay.
A bit, so just as a food for thought.
All right, any other questions for the petitioner on the warehouse part of it? And I suppose the surface lot, because just, I was quick, you have charging stations now on the lot there?
No, our charging stations are up front, where the retail customers are, but this is a staging area to bring them up, charge, bring them back. We put them closer to the showroom.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Mr. Ellison.
This is really for Len, it's probably more for Jeff or, or architect, I can't remember. Anyways, the facade we've got on the front of the building, where we've got, looks like the dog houses, the five dog houses.
Correct.
Okay. Are those going to be strictly painted, or is that going to be actually constructed out of some kind of lumber so it gives some relief?
Right now, we're showing this painted.
Just painted.
We could explore an option where there is some type of, you know, applied or an application.
That's what I was wanting, just because it's just, it's going to be a brick wall with paint on it. I don't know if, but some...
It's a nice idea. Look at something like that to apply to the building.
That's all I got. Oh, no, it's not all I got. What do you think of the insulation between the two brick walls?
Yeah, we could always fur out each side of the wall, too. If we have the two block walls, we could add furring hatchet on each side with insulation and drawwall.
I just feel that there's going to be, I mean, when dogs are barking in that animal shelter, they're barking, interlaid, and I'm just worried about, but dog noise infiltrating into your space. But by the same token, you're going to have vehicles moving in and out of there, and it's just, I just don't know if inch and a half insulation would do a good enough job of breaking that.
Because you're right, though, that wall will have a UL rating to it, UL assembly, that's very specific for that hourly rating.
So they can't, they can't put the insulation in.
Possibly. I mean, there's always, there's always...
I just think it's something to look at. I think it would give us a look, because once the wall's built, you're not going to get it in there.
Oh, that's a good point.
I think it's a great point. I hear them every morning barking. It's great, though. It doesn't bother me when I come to work there and go, and they are, they can be loud. Yeah.
Okay, I think I'm done.
And then we may disrupt them, bring a car in. We don't want to do that either.
Good point. Yeah, so, Mr. Ellison, we could look at adding insulation. There'll be some type of, like I mentioned, there's a big rating to that wall that has a certain, certain way we have to construct it. And there's STC ratings, too, so we can look at something that's robust to help that. Good points, though, it's a good observation.
All right, I, I have a quick question, and again, I'm keying off Mr. Ellison's question there. Just so I know, Mr. Twing, if, if this facade is painted on, is that sign, which I like the sign, is that needing a variance? And is that something that in the future could be done on a site plan? Or, I mean, if that's a painted-on sign, is that on the brick, is that needing a variance?
Well, parts of it probably would be treated as a sign, but that's a separate action. action at the time they decide to submit.
Okay. That's not something we could combine with the site plan?
Not this evening.
Okay. All right. If they, again, hypothetical question. If somebody came to us with a site plan and said, here's my sign, I want to roll the variance of the sign into it, can we do that?
Generally speaking, how we deal with sign appeals is they apply to the building office who oversees sign ordinance. They get a rejection, I suppose, from various parts of the sign ordinance, whether it's too big, it's painted on, it's in the wrong location. So the building department first makes a determination.
Right, because we're the appeal, sign appeal board is what we are.
And they can appeal.
Okay, just curious. All right. Any other questions for the petitioner?
The five parking spaces in front, real quick. The two spaces to the east, am I looking at those correctly in the sense that you would essentially be crossing the ADA ramp to actually park in that spot?
Yeah.
To pull into it?
The ADA ramp is against the building. So the striping behind the parking spaces is just designating that that is a sloped area that meets ADA paving requirements to get you back to the sidewalk. It's not to get you into the building.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
And, okay, I'm going to ask one more quick question. Right now, there's a gate between 2005 and whatever it is, 2009. Are those gates going to remain?
No, we remove those.
Okay.
You'd have to for the access and how we cut that out.
All right. All right, very good. Any other questions for our petitioners? All right. So now you guys can probably have a seat again for a second, and we'll have a discussion here. Any other questions for Mr. Twing, or our attorney, or a motion, or further discussion? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah, I'll move approval of the special land use, because I find that the proposed warehouse, which is what we're judging here, meets all seven points under item C basis of determination.
All right. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Ellison. Is there a discussion about this? Okay, I will only make the comment that I agree with the, with your analysis. So if there's no other discussion, we'll call for the vote. We'll do a voice vote. The special land use has been moved for approval by Commissioner Douglas, second by Jim Ellison. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Motion passes. Congratulations on number one. All right. Next issue is the site plan. Is there anything further or different to discuss here, Mr. Twing?
Well, I think the only real determination is that you're comfortable with the parking along Bel Air, whether or not you want any screening between that parking and the right-of-way. If not, you can approve the plan as submitted. That's within your discretion. Secondly, the need for the three spots along the west front yard setback would require documentation on an access agreement with the property owner to the west. I believe that's 1921 Bel Air, in order to ensure access to those going forward. If that's not provided, there's nothing to say that they couldn't put them in, but you, the property owner may block access to them in the future. We wouldn't have any recourse. And then the other item was in regards to the demolition of the existing animal shelter. At the time, the new one becomes operational, or we would have to address additional parking numbers at that time. Obviously, I think there's plenty of parking in this area that they could address it. But based on the numbers we've provided you, that building is anticipated to be removed. That's really all this conditions under the site plan, unless the planning commission wants to change something or add something.
All right, Mr. Ellison?
Just a quick question. Depending on the outcome of how we divide the building, whether it's separate parcels or condominium, I'm assuming the planning department can handle all the logistics to make sure that whatever we build meets our intent.
Yeah, either, either way, whether they land, do a land division or do a condominium, the only real difference is describing the condo portion, who owns what, and then the common elements. I would anticipate if it did a condo, that the parking, the driveways would all become common elements of the condominium, and the building envelopes for each use would become the ownership portion. But either one's fine from a planning zoning standpoint?
I just...
Where it impacts is really a building code discussion.
I'm just trying to make sure it doesn't need to come back in front of us for any kind of approvals or...
No.
Okay. Okay. I think I'm ready to make a motion. We approve the site plan as shown and with the contingencies listed. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Gantina. All right, further discussion. The motion has been made to approve the site plan with the listed contingencies.
Yeah, I'd be inclined to remove item four, the screening requirement. It looks like things are pretty tight along that, the division between the five parking spaces and the sidewalk. Typically, we require screening where commercial businesses are near residences, and we want to, you know, protect adjacent properties from, you know, headlights. I don't think that's an issue here. I don't know that, I didn't look closely, but I don't think there's much screening elsewhere in this corridor. So could we just generally agree to remove item four? Mr. Ellison?
I could accept that modification. I'm sorry, I missed that one. I would have excluded it myself.
I took your motion to approve the site plan as depicted.
Yeah.
Meaning that there's no wall shown currently. So the wall would be taken out.
That was my...
But for clarity, we'll take item four out.
All right, very good. So the clarified motion of...
Gary, excuse me. Just making a quick statement. Point out, the process of getting to where we're at now has been a long process. And, but I think in the end, it has proven to be a very good public-private partnership between the city and Mr. Nadolski and his company. And it means we can work together, and we can come up with something that's going to benefit both the business owner and the city. And we're coming out with an animal shelter that is just going to be top-notch. It's not perfect, but it certainly is better than what we have right now. And I think if you wait long enough, that whole shelter's going to fall down on its own, and you'll have to tear it down. So.
I'll just add a comment, and it's, we haven't required this at all, but there was informal discussion about using some materials to delineate the little houses on the front of the building instead of paint. And speaking as a city commissioner who's going to be paying for all of this, I say stick with the paint.
No. Too much maintenance. But anyways.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments? All right, I'm going to restate this. The clarified motion by, I forgot who made the motion. Was it Mr. Ellison or...
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Clarified motion by Mr. Ellison is to approve the site plan with the stated contingencies, except for four, which would be inconsistent with the site plan. So, seconded by Mr. Gantina. Is there any further discussion of the motion? All right, hearing none. I'm going to call for the voice vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion passes. Congratulations. Good luck with this. All right. Very good.
Why didn't we get to hear from Mrs. Ellison giving us, why didn't we get to hear from Mrs. Ellison to give us all the good points of the animal shelter and where it's going?
No, we needed.
All right. Next order of business is other business, non-action items. We have the RCOC road report and the MAP training workshops. Mr. Twing, any comments on these?
No, they're simply for your information.
Well, I guess I do have a question. I didn't actually spend much time looking at the workshops, but I did go to some last year. And we had discussed at some point having some sort of a record-keeping about continuing education. I think we haven't done anything about that, have we?
Record-keeping of...
Yeah, like the commissioners either requiring or noting when they do continuing education.
We track who's made requests and whether we funded them or not. So we have a record of it. I really haven't reported that out to this body.
Okay. I think, I think there is some value in having people know that the commissioners are continuing to stay engaged in the, you know, the industry there. So, okay. Comment.
Well, yeah, and I do think we established as a rule that new commissioners need to participate in, or should, we can't require it, but should participate in training within their first year of appointment. And I might say that Mr.'s Esbry and Ellison, if they haven't done something like that, might do a refresher course.
I sat up here for 16 years.
Laws change.
All right. Very good. Any other comments about either these non-action items?
I'd just update on the master plan a little bit. The survey, the second survey is closed, closed at the end of the year. We've gone over the results of that with the consultant, DPZ. It is hoped that they will have a section of the master plan draft ready for your review at the February meeting. The discussion was to take it in sections rather than one, have them draft the entire document, bring it to you. But we're going to bring it to you in sections.
All right. Is there, just a quick question. Is there, is the data available on the website?
It hasn't been posted yet. I think they're doing some final analysis of the raw data, putting it together in a format that will be ready to get out. So.
Do you know, just offhand, what the number of respondents was?
I don't recall. I want to say it was 2,900, if I was guessing, 3,000.
Yeah, I think we were at 2,900 like three weeks before it closed.
Yeah.
So I wouldn't be surprised if we were up by 3,000.
I thought it was 35.
Really?
I could be misspoken, but when I spoke to...
Joseph.
Joseph, he indicated it was near that.
I think that's awesome. I mean, I feel like these results will really reflect the will of the people.
Well, and a nice thing I do know is there were a lot of people that indicated this was the first time they had participated in something on the master plan. So there was a lot of new people making comment.
All right.
Right.
That's interesting. Okay. Very good. Do any other commissioners wish to make a statement for the record before there's a motion to adjourn? Mr. Esbry?
I'm going to make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. All right. Any discussion then? I'm sure there isn't. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.